All right. Okay, thank you again for having us this evening and letting us celebrate a promotion. As I've said before, everything rises and falls on leadership, so when selecting leaders, it's important to find people of character who demonstrate consistency, competency, and the right attitude to lead others. A leader is someone who does more than just lead or manage people, they must be driven by the right motivation and make a positive impact on the people around them. Leaders promote optimism. Being promoted to a position where you lead others is a significant step in a career. It shows a willingness to challenge oneself and become more involved in the success of the department. It shows a willingness to lead and think beyond yourself. This individual understands and represents our department value, core values of respect, and we are pleased we can share this accomplishment with their family, members of the governing body, and citizens of Spring Hill. And tonight, I'm delighted to formally and publicly recognize the promotion of Aaron Blunt. And with that, I would ask Aaron and your wife Jade to come on up. And you guys get to stand, you know, front and center. Is there anybody you'd like to introduce that's here? Okay. So let's just talk a little bit about you, because I know you love that. Aaron was born and raised in Texas. He earned a football scholarship from Emporia State University, where he played offensive lineman, I am told. He graduated with honors and received his bachelor's degree in crime and delinquency. And I'm not really sure if that's actually a degree or what he did in his off time. At any rate, not only did he do well in class, but his natural leadership skills were also recognized when he was selected as team captain. Aaron and Jade were married in 2019 and are both avid hunters. I think it's a debate on who's better, but Aaron joined the Spring Hill Police Department in 2014 and attended the police academy in Hutcheson, Kansas. During his career, Aaron has twice, been twice recognized with life-saving efforts. In 2017, Aaron earned the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police Valor Silver Award, and in 2020, he received the department's Life Saving Award. He is a TASER instructor, a field instructor, or a field training officer, and a CIT officer. Earlier this year, he sought out more responsibility and took on the management of our traffic step grants, and in late June, became the administrator of our in-car and body camera system. Aaron is described by his teammates as fun to be around, positive, and a team player. I did fail to say that his two younger sisters, Zoe and Chelsea, and his mother Lori are watching online in Texas, so thank you guys for being here as well. Much is expected of Aaron, and I have no doubt he will rise to the challenge. He has already in many respects, and I know we will see great things from him as we move forward as a department to serve our community to the best of our ability. So with that, this is what you've been waiting for. Hope you guys have been practicing.
I shared this with Sergeant Blunt in an email a couple of weeks ago when Chief Henson had announced his promotion. Shortly before my son passed away in January, he had been in process as an applicant for police officer for the city of Spring Hill. He had done a ride-along with then Officer Blunt, and after that ride-along, when it was done, minutes after it was done, he was on the phone to me talking about how unbelievable that experience was, that he felt like Officer Blunt was the cop's cop, and that he treated him like a peer, that he taught him so much in that short period of time. And it's just one of those things, when you think about how many lives we touch and how we spend our time with one another, that I thought was so unique, and when I saw his promotion, I thought, you know, it's probably time for me to share that with him. Sergeant, thank you very much. You have done wonderful work as an officer, you will do wonderful work as a sergeant, and we will anxiously watch your career as you continue to grow. Thank you very much. And I have scanned the room for Chief Francis, and I must be missing him. Is he not here for the second quarter performance measures? Okay, well, we will go ahead and defer that. Perhaps we'll move that to a later meeting. If he shows up, we might be able to jump back to it. Next item is the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. This takes us to the first of our formal council action items, consideration of approval of appropriation order 2021-812.
Move to approve appropriation number or order 2021-08-12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Approve? What is the word I am looking for? Opposed. There we go. I am so sorry. I was expecting, I was expecting a different vote there. Motion carries five zero zero. Item number six was removed. This will take us to item, item number seven, consideration of approval of engineering agreement. This is 193rd and Ridgeview, northbound turn lane. Is this Mr. Messer or Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, you're up the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm before you this evening to consider approval and engineering agreement for the designing construction contract administration of the northbound turn lane project at 193rd and Ridgeview Street. As you'll recall, in previous council meetings, when we brought some agreements to you for this subject, that the traffic study for the middle school noted that a northbound right turn lane is warranted on Ridgeview Road and 193rd Street when the school is constructed. The city and the school district agreed to cooperatively fund that improvement, and the middle school school district is building the public improvements immediately adjacent to the school, but this is not adjacent to the school, so we're cooperatively working on that. By terms of the agreement approved by the city council at the July 8th meeting, the improvement will be designed and constructed by the city, with the school district providing $270,000 in funding for the, for the project. This proposed agreement fulfills the statement, that agenda item review sheet indicating that an agreement for design would be forthcoming. This agreement is being presented in accordance with Section 3 of the purchasing policy and the on-call engineering agreement between the city and Lamprey and Nielsen, and the previously approved reimbursement agreement with the Spring Hill School District for payment for the project. Total cost of constructing the turn lane is conservatively estimated at about 500, little over $500,000. Agreement proposes the school district contribute 53% of the cost and the city 47%. The design agreement that we're presenting to you this evening is below the budgeted amount in the overall project budget. With that, staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor and staff to execute the agreement for design and construction contract administration of the 193rd and Ridgeview Northbound Turn Lane. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
What's the total amount of the contract?
Of the design contract?
Mm-hmm. $66,908.
It is $66,900.
Move to approve the engineering agreement with the design and construction contract administra, design and construction contract administration of 193rd and Ridgeview Northbound Turn Lane with Lamprey and Nielsen incorporated in the amount of $66,908.72, is how I see here, so.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, oh, Mr. Burton.
That would be, at this point, not to exceed.
Yes.
On that.
It's an hourly not-to-exceed contract.
Not to exceed.
We don't use hours.
It could be less. So, thank you.
I amend motion to say not to exceed in the amount of $66,908.72.
Second the amendment.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. This takes us to consideration of approval of supplemental engineering agreement for 199th and Ridgeview. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. We're here to discuss a supplemental agreement, 499th and Ridgeview Roundabout Project. Let me get to the right, to the right document, which I had the wrong one up. The additional design services on the roundabout with Trans Systems Corporation, who was the design engineer for the roundabout. The design plans for the roundabout were prepared by Trans Systems, and after final plans repaired, prepared and modified once, and during construction, plan revisions were necessary for grading and some driveways, storm drainage to accommodate the residents as a result of the Eastman acquisition agreements, and final utility relocations. Trans Systems, as you might recall, had a very tight design budget on that, had very limited funds available for plan revisions or anything of that nature during construction, and requested the attached supplemental agreement to perform the plan revisions. The agreement is in accordance with terms of the original design contract with Trans Systems and has been presented to the city attorney, reviewed by the city attorney. The overall project budget should be adequate to accommodate this with our contingency. The agreement amount is $2,814 for the supplemental. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor and city staff to execute supplemental agreement with Trans Systems Corporation, and that agreement is in your packet. Be happy to answer any questions.
Move to?
This is the full amount of the?
The supplemental is $2,800, yes. It's, it's not very much. I mean, in terms of design, the original design contract was, you know, 120,000, 30,000.
716, and it'll take the total cost of 143,530.
Yeah, it's on the, the new numbers on the agreement. I will say that the, we paved the roundabout. We're curbing it this week, just to, by the way, and should be paving again next week. We, we think we can have, with a little bit of, of good weather, that we can have the whole thing open by the end of August.
You know, Mr. Miller, you just stole my thunder.
Oh, sorry.
Announcements.
Well, I was excited, I'm excited about it.
I was gonna steal it from Pat.
Yeah.
It's okay. One good term deserves another.
There's a lot of work to be done, but it's, it's on the right path.
Good. It'll be functional, but would you be, still be doing some grading and such afterward?
We'd be doing some restoration, but we, the goal would be to have it surface pavement marked and signing and every G-operable streetlights.
Including final grading and such?
Well, there'll be some work behind the curves likely still.
Okay.
But.
Probably 95% then.
Yeah, fully, fully open in all directions is the key here.
Okay.
Which would be well ahead of the original contract even deadline for that.
Absolutely. Mayor, move to approve the supplemental engineering agreement for the additional services on the 199th and Ridgeview Roundabout with Trans Systems Corporation in the amount of $2,814.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. This takes, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
This takes us to announcements and reports. I think everybody has seen, work has finally begun on Webster Street. Pat, I'm gonna ask you if you would, not right now, when we get to staff reports, if you would just kind of remind everybody what the process is that's happening right now, and then what those phases look like just from a high level to make sure that everybody is, has a good understanding, okay? Also, a week ago, Tuesday, I had the privilege, I was again invited to the Chamber of Commerce to provide an update on the state of the city. That was a well-attended event, and I certainly appreciate and want to extend my thank you again to the Chamber of Commerce for inviting me for the seventh year to deliver that address. And that is all I have. Mr. Owen?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Leighton?
I'm just getting caught up on a couple of things on my desk when I was reviewing some stuff. One of the things that we might want to talk about for the budget of this coming year and think about is the bond market. So it's a really good bond market from what we understand. So if we're going to finance something anyhow, it might be the time to do that, because the bond rates are not gonna get any better, possibly. Also, with the new infrastructure bill that was going through, I did some reading, and it looks like they might be putting the BABS back out, which is the Build America Bonds, that we utilized back in 2008 and '09, I believe. Saved us some money for that, because what happens, this is the federal government makes them from an exempt bond to a, from a tax exempt to a taxable bond, but the rate gets higher for those people that pay, but the federal government subsidizes 35% of it, so therefore, our rates in the end actually end up being lower than the original bond that we could have got. So we need to kind of keep our eyes out for those as they're coming through, and I think we might want to just be talking about doing some of those projects that we want, want to do now instead of deferring them. And there, have we had any communications or developed anything with the Office of Brand Mountain? They just have started a broad, Office of Brand, broadband development with the governor's office. Have we had contact with them at all?
I'd have to ask Mr. Burton.
Yes, we, we are under, we've had contact with them through KDOT, because KDOT also has some broadband of funding, and in that same meeting. Now, as far as going out there and talking to them about us receiving funds for that, no, I have not.
I think we might want to do that, because it might not, they might have some other funds other than just KDOT that I was reading about that might be available and help us out for some under, you know, underserved areas in the community, so. And then I got a couple of other things I'd kind of like to just, oh, there was one more thing. The other stuff, I'll just talk with you, Mr. Burton, on the side. Let's see. The, I did review our Miami County, the real water district, what do we call them? But anyways, for the past year, there were four citations against the Miami Rural, Rural Water District Number Two from last year. I'd kind of like to get with you and kind of find out and dig into that, and just make sure that there's no recurring any of those, or what was the primary causes behind them.
Well, I think one of them was the infiltration.
Correct.
Which was a significant event.
Big disruption.
Right. There was three, there was a carbon, I think exceeded the total on 7.1 to 7.31 turbidity in between 1.1 and 1.31 and chlorine, between 1.1 and 1.31, so.
Yeah, I think those are all the same event.
Yes.
Same precipitating event.
But almost six months apart from the.
No, the, the last ones that you.
The last two, yes.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to kind of go through and, you know, kind of check into that and see where they are at with it to make sure that they don't have that recur, so.
All right, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Rucker.
I am hearing a lot of positive feedback from the community about the, the roundabout out there. It's getting close, and people are noticing that, but also that we're starting to do the work on Webster. So people are happy. I keep, I keep reminding them to have patience, because nothing ever happens as soon as we'd like it to, so, but that is good news. That is, that is good news, we're going onward and upward, so. That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Graves?
No report.
Ms. Roth?
Congratulations to Sergeant Blunt, that's very exciting, I know you love it, that's awesome. And I also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Messer for helping keep businesses in the loop on what to expect with that construction, that greatly affects a lot of businesses, so thank you very much for keeping folks in the loop on what's going on on Webster.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Staff reports, Mr. Burton?
Just a little update on, Dan told you about the roundabout. Webster obviously has started now. It's, it's actually harder grinding than what they anticipated, so that's good, means the material is better, so they're actually having to do the grinding twice. As far as the timeframe and all of that, Mr. Messer will speak to that.
We made a change the other day, I think we've changed it several times, but in the meeting, it's like four quadrants, there's four, one, two, three, four. We, we're gonna go from the south to the north, one lane the whole way, and then back the other way, but because of the concerns from the school and a few other, it's gonna start at Casey, basically Casey's up in that area where they started, move to the other side of the street, then go south, and then finally, the final section will be the one next to the school. So it just seemed to flow better, and it would get the school a little bit more time to get all their beginning of the school year jitters out of the way and the people stopping, so that was one of the changes that was made.
So what they're doing right now is the concrete work, and then what's going to happen? Are they gonna just do the concrete work, move on to the other quadrants, and then we'll go with the overlay? That's, that's really the process I was wanting to get out to the public.
UBS will be the last step, and then striping behind it, but.
So most importantly, I wanted people to understand that when we move to another section, that doesn't mean that we're just completely done. It's going to have a completely different and fresh look upon completion.
Right. It'll be covered completely with UBS, and that's the very last stage. We met with the school district and worked it out with them to try and get, let them get the kinks and jitters out of the way for the beginning of school, because we had originally sent out to all the, the businesses and all that we were gonna start the south and move up, but Mr. Messer very quickly, and Lamprey and Nielsen got back in, rechanged everything, and the businesses, I think, are okay with it. We haven't had any complaints yet, anyway. So with that, this is the last week for the pool, is that correct?
That's correct.
We'll have all the numbers and all out on that, and we're working on budget, and that's really about all that.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
No report.
Ms. Armstrong?
No report.
All right, Mr. Messer?
I had a couple of things. We had talked about Purple Wave and what we had talked about putting this up to sell. The first three vehicles are going on now, and then I think, when we talked about it, I said if there was anything additional that was of small value, I would include it in the report. Well, we did find a trailer down there with a bunch of furniture that has been sitting there forever, waiting for some sort of disposal, so I asked Purple Wave to include that in the next. So we'll be getting rid of some old furniture, questionable value, but that was one of the.
Sure.
Value of the, the smaller items I wanted to report that we were gonna do, and so we're doing that. We met with them today, we were pretty happy with them. The first three vehicles are ready to go, the next three that we had agreed to, plus a mower, will be on the next sale item, because we had to remove the decals, and I guess it makes sense not to put a fully. it makes sense not to put a fully marked police car up on Purple Wave, so we're getting all the decals on.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Chief.
We've, we had Nationalite, Nationalite out on August third. It was very well attended. We had two neighborhoods, and both of them have been very well attended. Hopefully, next year, we'll get a few more neighborhoods to participate. We had a popsicle event at the pool the other day, so, I believe, and that was in partnership with the fire department. On August twenty-third, we are training all of our staff on autism. We're having the experts come in from Lake Mary, and also a parent who has an autistic child come in and share experiences, so they can better be equipped and prepared when we're dealing with residents who are autistic and maybe in a crisis. So, that will be coming up. And then we are having a new officer start on August thirtieth, so.
Very good. And, and as I think everybody up here knows, just to try and kind of balance the load for Mr. Burton, I have the police chief reporting directly to me. Chief Vincent and I spent about two and a half hours together, was that earlier this week, late last week?
I think it was last week.
Okay, so about two and a half hours late last week, talking about budget, and we were able to identify several thousand dollars in necessary expenditures, like, for example, body cameras and, and other safety equipment for officers that we need to purchase, but we were able to identify other avenues to obtain those. For example, use of forfeiture funds, use of alcohol tax funds, and Chief is going to do a little bit more research on alcohol tax funds to see if we might be able to extend our use of that for some training. So, again, Chief, about how many, was that about eighteen thousand dollars in expenditures?
Well, approximately, I think it's a little less than that, and I did confirm that we can use it for training, so that will cover that expense.
Terrific.
With regard to some of the equipment items with, on the forfeiture funds, there will be some limitations that we may have to readdress that.
Okay. Well, we will certainly continue to be creative in our approach as we work to meet the state's mandate and expectation for budgets this year, so I appreciate everybody's hard work there. Mr. Jenkins.
No report.
All right, would entertain to recess into executive session for five minutes.
I move the city council recess into executive session for five minutes to discuss personal matters, none, of non-elected personnel exception, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen being one of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at, we will probably start at seven-thirty and finish up at seven-thirty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. There will be no formal action expected at the conclusion of the executive session, and we are in recess until seven-thirty.